All right, everybody, if I could have your attention, please. I'd like to call this meeting order. And if you would join me with the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. We do have a quorum. We have all nine of our directors here today. That's always a good sign. First order of business is to approve the minutes of December 9th Governing Board Workshop. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand as written. Okay, new business. November 2022 Financial and Capital Report, CFO Cliff Swan.
Good morning, community. Good morning, committee and Governing Board members. I'm going to take some time to go through the November financials. These were not presented at BNF, but we do summarize those in these workshops to get this out in front of the board, to make sure that there's any discussion on anything. We can do that. So I'll do a little shameless plug on Tuesday. We're having our BNF meeting, so please come. And we'll be going through December and December year-to-date. That being said, let's get started. So November, summary revenue, total operating revenue favorable of $130,000. Membership, we're, you know, the small variance there, we're battling. Prior year, we had such a good year in guest fees and transfer fees for home sales, so those have gone down. Fortunately, we've made up a little ground on the landlord fees, and we'll see a positive impact in landlord fees as we move forward, so hopefully we'll be able to pick up that lost revenue there. But $130,000 favorable through November. On the expense side to budget, we are running favorable of $140,000. We're still have some challenges down in the supplies and services and equipment area, battling inflation. So we're, you know, constantly looking at those expenses and trying to do the best that we can to be good stewards of the money that we spend there, but we are battling those inflationary pressures. So in total, income from operations compared to budget, we are $270,000 favorable over budget, or under budget. Looking at prior year, we're running behind prior year by $920,000, some of which we've, you know, knew that was going to be tougher this year compared to last year. And on the operating expenses side, some notables are wages and benefits. We experienced a pretty hefty increase in our health insurance, which we talked about, as well as the budgeted wage adjustments that we put into effect this year. So in terms of '23 versus '22, $568,000 in increases in those areas. And then again, talked about the, you know, other operating expenses when it comes to supplies, equipment, outside contracts, advertising, you know, all being impacted heavily in the inflationary areas. So moving to the capital portion of the financial statements, a couple of things here when it comes to comparing to budget is APF fees and our investments. So looking at our APF fees, we are running behind budget, and that is creating a variance unfavorable of $160,000. And then the unrealized gains and losses, if you look at that in our investment portfolio, we did make up quite a bit of ground in November, so we're showing a negative $480,000 there, but that is actually down from October of roughly a million. So we did make up some ground there, like I said. And then on the investment income, which helps offset that unrealized loss, we are making up some ground there to help offset that. Comparing to prior year, APF fees, you could see significantly down, $450,000, and same impact in the investment area. So some of the notables within that are, we're down roughly 170 transactions for APF fees compared to last year. Fortunately, we did instate a $500 increase in our APF fees, so that's softening the blow there, but the 29% decrease in APF fees is, or APF transactions, excuse me, is driving that $450,000 variance. And then again, talked about the reserve fund change. The investment income, however, is helping to offset that of $109,000. So in summary, we are $340,000 behind prior, I'm sorry, behind budget and $1.6 million behind prior year in our revenue over/under expenses. Moving to the capital improvement section, the fiscal year '23 budgeted amount was roughly $10.8 million, and we are tracking right on budget with a positive variance of roughly $44,000 in terms of capital spend, capital improvement spend. And then on the allowances side, budgeted of $400,000 in allowances. We've issued $87,000 in POs, so currently the unspent allowance through November is $312,000. I like to say it's all about the reserve fund, because it is. And looking at the reserve fund, we came out of fiscal year '22 at approximately 54% with budgeted inflows for '23 of $6.6 million. And looking at the, some of the impacts of the year-to-date information I talked about earlier with budget, projected FFB for this year was 50%, and we're tracking at roughly 49%. So we're right on track with what we budgeted in terms of the FFB percent. That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Sharon?
The other day, Todd mentioned that we weren't having to throw water, like we normally would. Where does that fall in this presentation you just said, as far as the expenses are?
So that falls in utilities, and we have, we'll see the impact of that in December and January. But yeah, we should, we should see the impact on the electricity now in terms of the pumps running, but there is an offset to that, because it's typically colder, so we have to heat the buildings a little more, but it's definitely a positive impact.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Excuse me, I do have a question, Cliff.
Yeah.
Has there been any additions or subtractions to the capital items that would affect the FFB?
You're talking about the capital improvements?
I'm talking about things that would go on or off the reserve study. Have there been any additions or subtractions?
There have. We'll talk about those in the December, but yes, we have had some, but the net impact, I believe, is pretty flat, not a significant impact on the FFB.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta, policy reviews, FA 2, 3, 4, and 5?
Yes, the properties committee reviewed these policies and found no issues that needed to be added or changed, and next month we'll finish with the remainder of the policies.
Okay, thank you. 3.03 is our 2023-24 Governing Board election is uncontested this year. We have four openings, we have three regular openings and one, a one-year tenure, and we only had three people apply and fulfill the requirements for candidates. So Kay Williams, Alan Schlemmer, and Christine Ovello will be installed as directors for fiscal year '23, '24, okay? Any questions? Okay. Oh, Roberta?
I'm just saying, I'm sort of disappointed in the community of this size that we couldn't get four candidates.
I agree. I think everybody's just so satisfied, they figure, why run? All right, Carl, review of $50,000-plus in capital submissions?
Good morning, directors, and thank you. What we're going over today is simply the next step in the project planning process. I'd like to inform everybody that other than budget and finance, only due to cancellation in the early months meetings, every committee has seen this report. Again, it's just another step in our project planning process where the September through November months are the budget development. All committees get to have input and make recommendations for the capital projects that have been either requested as new or have been formulated from the reserve study tool. This is the budget in its entirety for capital as far as what was approved by the Governing Board to be given to the general manager to work with in formulating the full annual budget. So this is just our next cycle of steps, January through approximately February, March. We're getting much closer to combining the two portions of the budget, the operating budget and the capital, and I like to always be able to give an opportunity for us to have any further comments. So technically, at this phase, we talk about projects that are $50,000 and greater, and as we get further into the budget cycle, we narrow that down to $100,000 and over. So I think everybody's had this list. You'll see in the very far right column, the highlighted areas are the projects and the overall capital that are $50,000 and greater. And I open the floor to anybody asking any questions.
Carl, have there been anything added or subtracted to this list from the last time we saw it?
The only subtraction that you would have seen that is not on this list is a deletion of a $10,000 storage container that would be solved in this year's budget for much less. We were able to locate containers at a great price right now, $5,000, and our current budget allowed for that.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Sharon?
Okay, so have we looked at removing any of these items due to the inflation? For example, the golf carts or the maintenance equipment where you're buying new things? Is it something that can be put off a year or not if it went, if the cost is going down on certain things?
This being January, typically, we are not in that phase of finding reductions in capital based on not knowing the full development of the operating budget. So that's the purpose of these monthly reviews by not only committees, but by you, the Governing Board. So if today is one of those moments that if you had something in question, we could discuss it. But overall, until the two budgets kind of get put together, do we know what we're up against? Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Carl, that is actually a good point. These numbers are at least three months old. Once these get approved and you start putting out the POs, do you expect these numbers to change because of inflation?
I have to say that based on projections, we do usually consider inflation already right from the beginning of September. So I will, I've always collected what I call pre-bids from vendors, because they assist greatly in providing information. We do that, you know, I really assign a lot of projects to a whole bunch of different vendors and get that different viewpoint sometimes on the larger projects. Almost like I'm going out to bid for them, so where I might even have two or three viewpoints from a vendor for different general contractors and whatnot. Then we have our conversations of contingency. So like when it comes down to conversations for asphalt mill and replacement, what did we experience the previous year? So I know that one of the items on this list is the RH Johnson Lot 3 parking lot asphalt replacement. We had 100% stabilization in Lot 2, and that fortunately, that parking lot was going on while the budget was being created, so we put that contingency in there. And I shared those notes in my discussions with you all before, that kind of what level of contingency did I factor into this pricing? So I am thankful that for six years, we haven't gone over budget in any of the capital parameters, technically, you know? So I think we're on track for good estimating here.
Okay, good. Lisa, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, President Hurley. Carl, I'm wondering if we should take a look at the Memos Cafe in lieu of what we just discussed earlier this week regarding Memos and their lease being up. And I think we have another year and some odd months, and perhaps we might be looking at that location for something else. Do you think it would be something we should go walk and look at and discuss? Maybe this is a $25,000 charge that we possibly might not need down the road if, do you want to go do that?
So according to this cycles of project planning processing, I'm going to say we've missed that boat in timeframe and ability to get a lot of work done. But you as the Governing Board, if you have something that you feel that you want to add to this at this point and recommend to the general manager, I have to defer to your discussion on that. I would say that technically, you know, I would say that's next year's business. Starting July 1st, we go through the project planning process again and develop that for the next year's business. I do know that just this budget alone is going to have enough impact with just these projects in getting everything approved, so.
Lisa?
Thank you, Tim. No, I'm not talking about adding to it, I'm talking about removing it and possibly looking at it per our discussion about maybe if we don't put in another restaurant in there, do we really need to be redoing those cabinets and countertop resurfacing them? That $25,000?
I understand what perspective you're coming from now.
Yeah, maybe I wasn't clear, I apologize.
So let's find that project here.
It's the fourth from the bottom in the blue, if you come up.
So we are open for discussion then on that right now. That would be why we're here.
If that's something we should be looking at, or do we not want to bother to look at that? And should we put the $25,000 into it and?
It comes down to a timing scenario, right? As we sit here today, the equipment in the cafe does belong to the proprietor of the restaurant. Countertops obviously are ours. They are in need of replacement, they are of that age. But where we go in the future is still out to debate, as far as potentially expanding the pub, relocating the restaurant, doing a bunch of things there for us to talk about, think about. So yes, it could be postponed out of this particular year. The contract that we have with Memos runs through August of 2024, so it gives us a little bit of time, per se, to kind of get our act together and kind of get some alignment going as to where we're going. So it's definitely an option.
Super. Tim, is that something we could talk about doing? And maybe this might be $25,000 we could pull out if we don't actually have to resurface those countertops and cabinets?
Sure, it could be. Dick, would you talk about that in properties? Roberta?
No, we didn't discuss it.
No, could you?
Would you talk about it at your next meeting?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carl.
That was a good question. Thank you, Lisa.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
No, I do want to mention that Carl has a new title, Facilities Operations and Capital Project Manager. Congratulations, Carl.
Thank you very much.
All right, director comments. But before we start, let me just make one comment, and that is, right after the workshop meeting, we are going, automatically going to roll into a special meeting to take up an issue from the last regular meeting. The reason we're not doing it during a workshop is because during a workshop, we do not vote, but during a special meeting, we can vote, and that will be the topic of the softball club. Okay? Director comments? Roberta, do you have any comments?
No.
Harry? Lisa?
No.
Jack?
No.
Ann?
Just thanks to Lisa for catching that on Memos.
All right, Dick?
None, thank you.
Sharon?
None.
No comment.
All right, very good. We will open it up if anybody in the audience has a comment, and I see a familiar face coming to the microphone. But we still need name and number.
Tom Jones, 110390, president of the Automotive Restoration Club. And once again, February 11th, we will have our Car Show Swap Meet. At that event, our raffle car, which is a 2011 Camaro convertible, will be raffled off. I used to give you the spiel about the tickets. This time, it's one ticket for $20, six tickets for $100. They're available at the shop and at most events. And this year, we've gone into some golf events as well. So the opportunity is there, and it does support your club and support the, our paydown of our debt. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Another familiar face.
Good morning. Lynn Kellis, 129120. Basically, I think my question is probably directed at Carl or Cliff. I was just wondering, what is the dollar amount again that you hold in reserve for unexpected repairs?
Are you referring to the allowances?
Yes.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I didn't bring to my paperwork, I believe we're modeling it against last year's numbers, but the amount that we're putting in this year's budget is $85,000. And the only difference might be is last year's might have been $90,000, and I would have to confirm that. I could send that to you.
If new ideas are proposed through the year, does it take away from the repair budget, or is that pretty much left alone for repairs?
You're saying if a club requests?
If there's a new request, maybe for a new business or a new expansion of a club or something like that, does that take priority over repairs, or will repairs always be protected?
Safety, energy conservation, R and R are three top categories for budget capital considerations every year. New considerations are the fourth most important.
Perfect, thank you, Carl. The only other comment I had to make, when Lisa, when you were talking about the restaurant, is I know you're looking at Lizard Lounge and saving money, and I agree with that, but I would just ask that you make sure not to cut a restaurant, that if you're expanding Lizard Lounge, maybe put some food options there. We, as a community, do really need more restaurants here. Thank you.
Did I see correctly, there's three new Mexican fast food restaurants coming into the town?
Right? Something different, maybe.
Ole. All right, seeing no more comments, we are going to adjourn the workshop at, Karen? 9:50?
9:24.
9:24, all right? And I am going to immediately call to order the special meeting that we have. This is to take up an issue that was supposed to be taken up at the December 15th regular meeting, but the, there was a water main break in the parking lot, there was no water in RH Johnson campus, so that meeting was canceled. And we are going to take it up now. Okay? Just some ground rules, and these were set last year. There's going to be a motion on a waiver for the softball club to have a waiver on membership conditions in the RR and Ps. And that is, club membership is open only to those issued current owner member cards, associate member cards, or tenant activity cards. Okay? We have asked the softball club to have three people speak for it and three people spink against the waiver. They'll have three minutes each, and we're going to alternate one for the other. So I have a list of the people here, and I'm just going to pick the first one on top of the list. We'll do the pros first, Larry Reed.
Good morning. My name is Larry Reed.
Good morning, my name is Larry Reed, rec. card number 120508. My wife and I have been members of the Sun City West Softball Club for 12 years. I've been the chairman of our central league for five years, and I've served as, in the organization and management of that league and the club for most of those years. I think it's important to remind ourselves of the language of the rec. center governing documents relative to charter clubs. Chapter one in the Charter Club RRNP's, definitions and responsibilities. Reciprocity is defined as follows. With association approval, chartered clubs may share like facilities and activities with like communities and/or groups without paying a fee. Further, in the governing documents preamble, chapter one, line of authority responsibilities, the following is stated. The club's board is responsible for the club's internal operations. During the past meeting of the Charter Club Committee, some of those committee members expressed opposition to the practice of co-mingling of Sun City West and Sun City softball players on a team. Granting a waiver of reciprocity with the Sun City Club to continue decades-long tradition of problem-free play is certainly the authority of this board. However, I would suggest that issuing directives on how our club sets playing rules should be left to the authority of the club as stated in the preamble. Co-mingling is one of those rules. Sun City West and Sun City senior softball players range in age from their 60s to their 90s. Their skill levels are similarly diverse. Mixing players from Sun City West and Sun City on the same team creates greater parity and competitive balance of skill levels. This is a critical internal operation of the club which present, prevents a situation where a less skilled, less mobile player is in danger of being hit with a ball that can come off the bat in excess of 90 miles an hour. We know that the larger pool of players, the more effectively we can create the parity of skill levels between the teams. As a result, and what's really important to understand, there is greater safety in play as well as enjoyment of competition. Since 1988, the Sun City West and Sun City softball clubs have enjoyed a trouble-free fellowship of play. The heart of that longstanding enjoyment is having players from each club together on teams optimizing the safety and competitiveness of play. The Sun City West and Sun City softball clubs have become a family together. Breaking up a family should not happen. Waiver approval is simply the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Terry Tichener? Hope I pronounced your name right. Tishner? All right. All right, then we'll use... You're a pro, aren't you? What's your name? Okay, is Matt here, Matt Schleck? Shock, sorry.
Matt Shock, rec. card 120520. Mr. Chair, Governing Board, and General Manager Bill Swin. At a few meetings ago, you asked why members weren't at previous meetings. They were here. You're just not seeing them. They stood right here, 101 of them said no to co-mingling in our club. Not physically, but with their voices loud and clear. The reason they weren't here is they didn't want to be, endure personal attacks as being labeled anti-co-minglers, bully, and troublemakers like I have. I expose that will continue after today. Under the Governing Board definitions and responsibilities, the Charter Clubs Committee can advise to the GM and the Governing Board on matters related to Charter Club operations. The Charter Clubs Committee appointed a subcommittee to fact-fine today's very topic. They reported to the Charter Club Committee, who debated co-mingling for months. They then voted and sent their recommendations to the Governing Board to discontinue the waiver. As a homeowner and a recreation member, the GM and the Governing Board has an obligation to put Sun City West residents first over any non-resident or cardholder. That should not be debatable here today. By granting a waiver, you are overriding the RRNP's. The very reason they were written was to stop precisely what is happening. Co-mingling. If you vote to grant a waiver, you're voting to put non-members before Sun City West residents. I recall before I purchased the home here in Sun City West 10 years ago, taking tours of each rec. center. I was told the facilities in Sun City West were for Sun City West residents. Never was I told I'd have to use a Sun City recreation facility. Never was I taken to Sun City for a recreation facility. Demographics. The average age of Sun City is 72 years old, the average age in Sun City West is 75. The average population increase versus the last census, Sun City is at 1.22% population increase, Sun City West is at 0.07%. What's that mean? That means Sun City is getting younger, and they're growing at a faster rate. And per Jack Leary, 42% Sun City residents are now currently using the softball facility. 42% non-residents. And if they continue to grow at a younger rate, and they continue to grow at a higher increase in population, that is also going to continue to grow. And at some point, as you continue to grant waiver after waiver, that is going to basically put us in a minority. And in closing, do not recreate what was wrong in the past.
Okay.
But recreate what is right today. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Tony Pirelli?
Good morning, my name is Tony Pirelo, rec. number 138261. During previous meetings, one of the concerns we heard was utilization of our fields by the club members from Sun City. Those concerns seem to center around overuse of our resource, which results in increased maintenance costs spread across all residents. This prompted me to really analyze that impact. We have approximately 330 club members in West and 220 members from Sun City. For the current Fall League, we have 33 teams across the three primary leagues playing 32 games per week. 16 being played here at Liberty and 16 at the Sun Dome in Sun City. Based on those 60% membership numbers in West, if co-mingling and reciprocity were eliminated, we would be left with approximately 20 teams in West playing 20 games per week. Those 20 games would be played exclusively on Liberty Field, representing a 25% increase in use of that field that is already stretched to its limits. This will lead to more wear and tear, which would mean higher maintenance costs and the potential to turn future residents away should the club continue to grow at the current rate of 40 players per year. The spring seasons would be even more challenging as we have more members that play then. Additionally, eliminating the option to play at Sun City would have a similar 25% increase in use of Liberty over our, for our over 70s league. Because of the low number of teams in the coed league, the elimination of co-mingling and reciprocity would make it impossible to field enough teams at either community to justify a league. This analysis demonstrates that rejecting co-mingling and reciprocity results in more wear and tear on our field and eliminates the opportunity to play for those in the coed league. That elimination would mean many of our residents, including many of the females in the club, would lose playing time. The planned under 70 league in the spring will also not be possible without having access to the second field. There's also been a great deal of discussion about precedent for other clubs in West over co-mingling. None of those clubs, however, have the unique requirement of 20 to 22 players to support a game. This unique situation would support maintaining the precedent that we've established for our West softball club for the last 20-plus years. During this meeting and at previous board and charter club meetings, you've heard our position about the Charter Club RRNP's, the governing documents preamble that supported our combined league. We briefly discussed the club's long, successful history, establishing the precedent for our current structure, and we presented the facts associated with field utilization, demonstrating the very real potential for increased use, higher costs, and reduced opportunities for our residents should you deny reciprocity and co-mingling. Look, more than half our membership is asking for your support in maintaining our longstanding waiver. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Tony. Has Terry showed up?
There are reindeer up there.
Thought it was the mice.
They're late reindeer.
All right, Terry, go ahead. Give us your name and number, please.
Good morning, my name's Terry Tishner, my rec. card number is 402704. I'm a resident of Sun City West, I hold a rec. card in Sun City West, and I pay dues to the Sun City West Softball Club. And yet, someone who doesn't live here, doesn't have a rec. card here, and doesn't pay dues here have the same rights and privileges as I do on our softball fields and even more opportunities for play. As a 60-year-old male in the American League, I play one day a week on our facilities. If I was a 70-year-old female in the Central League from Sun City, I can play four days a week here. So with that being said, they have a greater opportunity to use the facilities that we have, and I have to go over there and play once a week as well. Also, the Sun City residents sit on our boards, chairs, and committees that represent our league. They have oversight and control over us, determining rules and policies that I'm going to be governed by as I play. During the year, we have numerous special events paid for by our club. Special events, one-pitch tournaments, holiday tournament, spring flings that are open to all of our club members here. We just recently, at the end of the month, had our holiday one-pitch, which they had to extend a day because all the residents from over there had taken up all the slots for here, so they decided to open that up. Even by doing that, we still had five, that I know of, members that were denied to play in our own tournament. We're always providing the food, all the stuff for these events. Throughout the year, we have reciprocal play with outside communities, Festival, Palm Desert. In these events, again, the same thing happens. Sun City residents come in, while we always use our field, our facilities, our meals, our everything, and take slots from people that are in our club that pay dues here and would like to play. So with that being said, I still have not found where co-mingling is actually anything. Reciprocity now, where the clubs are becoming more and more equal, is a definite viable source that we could use. Reciprocity is what I read, but co-mingling is what we deal with. The same thing is in here, we don't want outside entities controlling this board, the same is with us. In their rules, their reciprocity clearly says in one of the lines that no outside visitors, which is us, can dislodge them from playing. And yet, over and over again, in all of our special events, they always fill up. And when they're filled up, our people don't get to play. So with that, I say thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Let's see, Nick? Musso? Miso? Guys need easier names.
You were very close, it's Missos, but that's fine. All right, my name is Nick Missos. I am the current president...
Your rec. number, please.
Oh, sorry, 130703. And I'm the current president of the softball club. For those wishing not to co-mingle, one of the complaints is equal field time. We have several leagues that disqualify some players due to age and skill level. I am one of those players that's disqualified. Unlike pickleball and tennis clubs, we only have one field and not several complexes to play. We are limited with the amount of time each day we can have access to the field due to weather with frost in the winter and to darkness every season because our field is not lit at night. Playing at both Sun City West and Sun City allows us to give more opportunities for our members at Sun City West. For those wanting to co-mingle, the access to two fields is a huge benefit for us. We've been playing with Sun City for over 20 years and have formed an amazing bond with them. We are more of a family than a club. Our Hall of Fame is a combination of players and fans from both clubs. We also have our Angels in the Outfield Organization, and that tracks the health and wellness of all our players and their significant others. They are constantly emailing out health updates, concerns, and also raise money for local charities. I personally am a senior softball tournament player. I've played at softball fields all over the country, and some of the complaints about the Sun City field is that it's a dirt infield while ours is turf. I can tell you that the infield at Sun City is one of the top dirt infields in our area. It's much better than the infield at Festival or Sun City Grand. As president, my biggest issue is harmony in the club. If I had a magic wand, I would remove the need for this waiver. The need to come to these committees every year to ask for permission to play puts an undue strain on the relationships of our club. Ideally, a five-year waiver would allow us to co-mingle and also plan for the future. I would also like to address the comment about Sun City members being on our board. They are not. Our board is strictly Sun City West members. We have committees that have members of both. But all they can do is recommend to our board any final decision. All final decisions come from our board, and they are Sun City West members only. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Craig?
Rec. number 123608, I'm Craig Hohn. I just got removed from president, so all this is a transition. I'm speaking to not, to deny the waiver. We tend to demonize others if they have a different opinion, and that's really a problem here in our club and I think generally in this community, and we need to stop that. And I know there's been much lobbying to the board from members and need to stop that too, because this isn't a Congress. You've heard all the opinions, documented positions should be considered, not hearsay, third-party opinions. And I have three basic tenets. Softball club, you join and expect all benefits that come with it. You expect to be in a league, playing twice a week, a basic privilege when you join. With the reciprocal co-mingle agreement, waiver to RRNP's, you must play one of those games every week in Sun City. Reciprocal play should be voluntary, not a regulation. And that could happen on Saturday if you deny the waiver, but we do it within the regulations. Two lines of authority, this has always been, since I moved here in 2008, I didn't understand this. You have two governing boards, two Bill Swins, Cooks over there, and you have two softball clubs. And that line of authority, I think is ridiculous. I've never worked in any community or in the military or for a steel mill where you could have two lines of authority that direct, because when, by the time it gets to our clubs, I mean to our leagues, we have two lines of authority telling us what to do. And I think an example of this is during COVID, they restricted us from going there. That affected all Sun City players. Then Bill and you restricted it here. But anyway, I think that's how it happened. Two days later, I got another call. I think his name was Rudy. He said, I hear that you co-mingle reciprocal play with Sun City. Can we do that? I said, that's way above my pay grade. But, so I told him to call you, and he has 25 players, and they would like to do it. Okay, you guys govern, and we manage by RRPs. So as Nick said, if this is such a big deal for 22 years, why haven't you changed the RRPs to reflect us so we don't have to go through this every year and vote and do that? So I challenge you to govern by your RRPs and make a decision to not accept this waiver. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. All right, I'm going to read the motion, then where the governing board is going to have their comments, and after that, we'll take a voice vote. No, no. We asked, because we asked that three people from each side give it, and we are... According to the Arizona statute, 1804, okay? The board may place reasonable time restrictions on those speaking, and the board shall provide a reasonable number of people to speak on each side of the issue, which we did. So there will be no more... There will be no more discussion. Thank you. That's it. Okay, here is, I'm going to read the motion, and it's, I move that the governing board approve a request to create a charter club RRNP, Restrictions, Rules and Procedures Waiver for the Sun City West Softball Club to allow non-Sun City West players to co-mingle on softball teams playing on Liberty Field. Do I have a second? All right. Yeah. I move that the governing board approve a request to create a charter club RRNP, Restrictions, Rules and Procedures Waiver for the Sun City West Softball Club to allow non-Sun City West players to co-mingle on softball teams playing on Liberty Field. Do I have a second? All right. Yeah. I move that the governing board approve a request to create a charter club RRNP waiver for the Sun City West Softball Club to allow non-City West players to co-mingle on softball teams playing on Liberty Field. Okay? Now, let me just, now that it's been seconded, let me frame what the question that we're being asked. Okay, the question that we're being asked is co-mingling goes against the RRPs of allowing other non-Sun City West residents to play on our teams. Granting a waiver would essentially negate that portion of the RRPs for the softball club. Okay? They use co-mingling, they use reciprocity. Reciprocity is a totally separate issue. What we're only talking about is co-mingling, having people from both communities on the same team. Okay? I will open it up for comments. Jack?
I'd like to read a statement that I prepared actually a month ago, when I thought the meeting was going to be held in December. Having been immersed in the softball club co-mingling issue for the past several months, I've come to some conclusions about what the issue of co-mingling is really about. It is not about friendships and charitable acts that could disappear if co-mingling would cease, nor is it about additional wear and tear on Sun City West property if co-mingling were allowed to continue. The issue of co-mingling is about one thing and one thing only. Whether or not the Sun City West Softball Club should adhere to the rules that apply to all Sun City West chartered clubs as set forth by this board. Starting as a special dispensation some 40 years ago to allow a small number of players from Sun City, Sun City West, and Sun City Grand to play together on the few fields in existence at that time, to a threat in the year 2000 to disband the Sun City West Chartered Club for not following the RRPs, we find ourselves in the same place we were 23 years ago. What to do with the softball club, a Sun City West Chartered Club that is requesting to be excused from following the rules that every other Sun City West Chartered Club follows? In making this waiver request, the Sun City West Softball Club has come before this board saying that they wish to continue a special dispensation that long ago lost its reason for existing. This board has the authority to ensure that the Sun City West Softball Club, which has gotten a pass for the last 40 years, equitably abides by this board's rules. To grant this waiver for a condition that no longer exists is unconscionable to the other 90-plus chartered clubs. Vote no to co-mingling. Send the message that all clubs must follow this board's rules. Thank you.
All clubs are not the same.
Ma'am, no, no, we're not taking questions. This is for the board comments, so put your hand down. All right, anybody else have a comment? Roberta?
Don't show tickets to outside people.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're out of order. Please, please.
Well, I'm just wondering, how many times has this issue come before the governing board? I mean, over the years? Because I don't remember, I've lived here over 10 years, and I don't remember it ever becoming that big of an issue.
Jack, when was the last time? It was when the general manager was at 2001?
The last documented presence before the board was in 2000. That's the last one that I am aware of.
And were they given the waiver?
They were supposed to. What has happened over the past 20 years is that the waiver was put into place, and it was to be renewed every year, and that happened only sporadically. So that it may have come before the board, but it may not have. Perhaps in the last 10 years, maybe it has. I don't know. I don't have documentation for it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Terry. Director Vines?
Thank you, President Hurley. This is something, I have been talking to softball club members out and about in the community, so I've been getting information from both sides, and I'm just going to be open and honest. It's something that I have to vote the way I'm going to vote. My problem is that we do have other clubs out there co-mingling, and we can't just sweep it away. And the problem I struggle with is there is a letter out there that the club has been issued that was signed by a governing board director 21 years ago, I believe. Jack, do I have that right? Okay. And so, so now we're going to just deal with that, and we're saying that letter is no good anymore, and that's our job today?
That's our job today.
To vote that. Okay. So I think, I've heard everybody's arguments, and I listen, but for me to just be able to deal, sorry, deal with one club and say, you're not, because you're in front of us today, and you're co-mingling, and we're going to tell you no, when we know for a fact we have another club out there doing it, I can't do that.
Jack, go ahead.
Some additional information, Lisa, that might help, is that the only reason that we're here today discussing this with the softball club is that the agreement made in the year 2000 is that the governing board would make that decision for the club because it was a special dispensation. So the fact that other clubs are doing it, they are not doing it under the auspices of the governing board, but it was set up 23 years ago that the governing board would make that decision. So it's a special situation is why we're here today.
And I would also say that, Jack, Subcommittee on Tournaments, Reciprocity and all other stuff has not brought back the recommendation yet that will affect these other clubs if, in fact, they are co-mingling. Ann?
Well, I just want to say that I have no dog in this fight. I am not a member of the softball club and don't have any family member in it at all. But I do applaud the fact that we have taken on the last few years trying to clean up many practices that have gotten off course, and it sounds like this is one of them, and if Jack's committee may come back with others. But I think that if we have an opportunity to change things, and that's in our best interest, then that's what we need to do, but that's for all clubs. And this may just be the tip of the iceberg. I don't know. I think we'll be finding out.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Dick, do you have some comments?
I do. I want to comment. I appreciate Director Vines' comments regarding having some sense of uniformity and standardization. I'm a little bit confused. Mr. Perrello implied in his comments that, and maybe I'm confused here, but that you would have half the number of, and at least that's the numbers that he said, it'd have half the number of... The key to having play with Sun City is in reciprocity. It isn't in co-mingling. And the co-mingling is something that just happened, you know, throughout the years. You still have reciprocity. So I applaud you for the friendships. I think that's absolutely the right thing. I applaud you for your stewardship when you did have the ability or you did have the opportunity to improve your fields. That is all, is absolutely, you know, hats off to the softball club. What I don't understand is why reciprocity doesn't meet your requirements, that co-mingling is actually what has been described here. It's other people coming in to play, and so, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I know, I would defer to the president. So I have to look at this whole thing with co-mingling with some level of skepticism.
Sharon?
First of all, I'd like to say that I agree 100% that this, every club cannot be treated exactly the same. Because when you talk about co-mingling, you're talking about different clubs having different ways of operating and what uses they're making in our community. So for example, if you take, and I've said this before, but if you take karaoke, they have co-mingling. They have people that come in from the outside, and you hand them a microphone. Is that they're using our facilities by walking on our floor and using our microphone. If you have co-mingling, when you have a guest policy, where certain clubs have lots of guests and other clubs are not allowed to have any guests based on what they've put in. So some clubs are co-mingling using a guest policy versus not. We have one club that was changed to an unchartered club because they were co-mingling. So this also comes back to a marketing tool. People come here to see what we have. One of the ways that is, is the softball group. One of the other ways is our card clubs. Another way is what we have for painting and art, and it's free marketing. It doesn't, it doesn't cost us. It's still being, our services are still being used here. So to treat, and to treat softball after 20 years of having to be able to do this differently, to me is, I agree with Lisa 100%. We have had this in place. It hasn't been a problem. The club voted for it. The club asked us to do it, just like we have in their bylaws, so they're following their rules. And I think the person who wrote the RRPs did a disservice of saying you can't co-mingle without having that club have an opportunity to discuss it with us.
Okay.
Thank you. Point of clarification with Mr. Swin. Am I correct that the current reciprocity agreement is in effect until April of 2023? Before it would be up for renewal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think it's important that the club recognizes the difference between the reciprocity and the co-mingling. Currently not involved with the softball club, but have been for many years. My husband played, so we're familiar with it, and we're familiar with the good, the bad, and the ugly that's happened, that we've known it in the last 18 years. But as directors, it is vitally important that we never lose sight of the fact that we are here to represent the entire community of Sun City West, and I think that's paramount, that we keep that in focus. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move right to the voice vote. I'm going to start at that end. Roberta, let me reread the motion. Okay, the motion is, I move that the governing board approve a request to create a charter club RRNP waiver for the Sun City West Softball Club to allow non-Sun City West players to co-mingle on softball teams playing on Liberty Field. All right. A vote yes is to allow the waiver. A vote no is to deny the waiver.
I vote to support the waiver.
Okay. Terry?
I vote yes.
All right. Lisa?
Yes.
Jack?
No.
Ann?
No.
Dick?
No.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. It's four to four, which means the president has to vote. I have sat through a lot of these meetings where I've heard from both sides of the softball club, okay? And I have to go to the understanding that we are trying to clean up things that have been happening in the past that just slipped through the cracks that nobody was watching, and I vote to deny the waiver. All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. That is for Dick. You have a committee recommendations to propose for the financial audit firm?
I do. Per recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee and in response to Policy CO3 Subsection 1.2.3 regarding the board approval of a certified public accounting firm to conduct the annual financial audit, I move that the governing board approve the selection of Clifton, Allen, and Larson as the association's FY 2324 audit firm.
Okay. Do we have a second? Ann? Dick, you want to tell us a little bit about Clifton, Allen, and Larson?
Yeah, I'd actually like to talk about the selection process, and then we'll talk about Clifton, Allen, and Larson. We created a, requirements, we sent them out to interested firms. We did get three firms that responded back to us. The, there was a subcommittee, or a task force, excuse me, of myself, Mr. Bosa from the Budget and Finance Committee, Cliff Swan, Pete Finelli, and Terry West from the staff. And we reviewed, we blindly reviewed and scored, given criteria that we had established each one of the firms. We had video interviews with two of them, and we had face-to-face interview with one. And we had criteria such as depth of knowledge, industry experience, accessibility, finance, how much they would charge us, and it was overwhelming, the score. I believe there was a 30-point variance between the highest and the lowest, that Clifton, Larson, and Allen were the, by far, the favor of the task force. We have had experience with Clifton, Larson, and Allen for the past several years. We were consciously aware of the increased comfort level that we would have with a, with a firm, and so that was one of the reasons why we did the blind, the blind rating of the criteria for evaluating the acceptability of the firms. Clifton, Larson, and Allen does have one person that's dedicated to our account. That person is a senior partner with Clifton, Larson, and Allen, and they have a deep source of resources and people that do quality reviews for them as well. So I guess the bottom line is that we went through a fairly comprehensive, objective assessment of those firms that were interested, and we came out, and Clifton, Larson, and Allen came up with the best score of all. Anyone have any questions regarding that?
Any questions for Dick? Okay, Dick, would you read the motion again, please?
Will. Per the recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee and in response to Policy CO3 Subsection 1.2.3 regarding the board approval of a certified public accounting firm to conduct the annual... firm to conduct the annual financial audit, I move the governing board approve the selection of Clifton, Allen, and Larson as the association's FY2324 audit firm.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Next thing is, director comments on these issues. Roberta? Harry? Lisa? Jack? Ann? Dick?
None.
Sharon?
One question. Does changing to a 501(c)(3) allow you to co-mingle?
No.
So 501(c)(3)'s also are not allowed to co-mingle. Is that correct?
As long as they're a chartered club, no. The waiver did not pass.
Okay. Oh, I understand the waiver. I'm just asking if there's a difference between a three and a seven and a four.
Not as far as chartered club goes.
Okay. And then, unchartered? They have the ability to be an unchartered club? Yes or no?
That's a separate issue.
Right, I'm saying, but they can co-mingle if they're an unchartered club, correct?
That takes into consideration of whether or not they have priority of use of the field. So it's a bigger issue than just can they do it or can they not?
Okay, I'm just, that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I would like to make a comment, and thank you, directors, for this contentious vote. We were guaranteed to make half the softball club mad, which I think we did. So I'm going to open it up to visitor comments. If anybody wants to make a comment, come on down. Okay. If not, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 10:07. Thank you.